All right, we will call the meeting back to order from the recess of Tuesday. And the first item, before we go any further, Dr. Breedlove has a request dealing with an emergency on an air conditioning unit at Pender High School. And in order to take that up today, or to even discuss it, we will need to modify this agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion that we do that?
This is Ken Smith. I make a motion to modify the agenda to add the emergency request for the air conditioning unit at Pender High School.
All right, Ms.
Brandon, I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion. Mr. Springer has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Ken Smith, aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. So that, we'll take that up at the end of the discussion here. So, we needed to schedule a vote. I'll have to pull up the agenda. Let me make sure, Brandon, did we, do we need to go back into closed session, or no?
No, sir. I don't, I don't think so.
This is open, I think, yeah.
We did not have a closed session. Yeah. I think, I think we're okay.
Okay. All right, well, we will pick up.
Unless the board wants to go into closed session. Sorry, Mr. Hall. Unless the board wants to go into closed session.
I don't think we have anything here that requires it, and the emergency repair doesn't require it either. Ms. Burns is on her way, so if y'all don't mind, let's go ahead and let Dr. Breedlove tell us about the, the problem at Pender High. And while we're waiting on Ms. Burns to get here, I think she got caught in traffic.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And I've asked Mr. Taylor to address the board with this. This was brought to my attention today. Apparently, we have tried to fix Pender High School HVAC unit that services both the cafeteria and meat, just the media center?
Yes, sir. We've replaced the cafeteria because it did fail. We have the other unit that we purchased with Ezra dollars. And now the media center unit, which we knew was limping along, is in need of replacement. And we would like to move forward. It did fail yesterday. Both compressors went out. And we've tried to repair those compressors, but it would cost us several thousands of dollars to buy the components, which could take us several weeks to fix. But we do have the replacement unit on hand. We would like to request permission to move forward with the installation, not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars by the company. The paperwork is on my desk. I cannot, Superior Mechanicals.
Okay.
This is Ken Smith. I make a motion to approve the request as presented to the board.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion. Mr. Springer, would you like to second?
What I'd like to say first is, I don't want us to end up in a position like we're at with the way of, Brandon, is there any way we can get a general contract through up, or he contracted these subs to kind of hold their feet to the fire when it's not all the way fixed, or they don't come in, or you know, whatever kind of excuse they can come up with to not do the job? I think if anybody deserves it, Mike, and the students as well.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, getting the paper right on the front end is going to be important. So, yes, Mr. Springer, we can do that.
Mr. Smith, do you mind amending the, amending the motion to include that?
I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to sit there and, and wait even longer for our staff and students and stakeholders to be miserable with no air. So, I would hope that that's just due diligence. If needed to amend, I'll do a friendly amendment.
So that part of the building has no air conditioning at this time, right?
That is correct. Superior Mechanical is a general contractor for HVAC equipment and engineering services. We've worked with Cheetum and Associates to make sure the design was appropriate and approved by DPI. So, all those items have been checked. We have the machine in place. We simply need to remove the old machine and replace it with the new machine.
Which you were going to do anyway, right?
Which we had in plan to do this, this summer, yes, sir. We were hoping to make it through the school year.
I'm so sorry. This is Beth Burns. I was a little late getting in due to traffic. Could you give me a brief summary as to what was, what's been presented?
Yes, ma'am. Air handler unit number seven failed at Pender High School yesterday. We, we have already purchased the equipment because the air handler over the cafeteria and the air handler over the media center were both the same age, and were giving us a lot of problems, costing a lot to maintain. So, we intended to replace those units as part of the Cheetum assessment, utilizing our Ezra's funds to begin with. It just failed before we could actually make it to the end of the school year.
And you are asking to...
We are asking for permission to move forward with a quote not to exceed fifty-three thousand dollars for Superior Mechanicals to move and replace that piece of equipment.
All right, so Mr. Smith has made the motion. Does anyone have any additional questions?
Can I hear the motion, please?
Mr. McPherson, do you have the motion anywhere, word for word?
I, I do, I do. The motion, as, as I understand it, is to approve the contract as presented with due diligence and appropriate backstops to ensure compliance with the drawings by the contractors.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
This is Brandon Springer. If I can, Mr. Chair, Mr. Pearson, how long will it take to get a contract through up and sign, move forward?
As soon as I get their quote, I mean, I can get it done this afternoon.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion that's on the table with the friendly amendment involved.
Okay. Mr. Springer has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Ken Smith, aye. Brandon Springer, aye.
Beth Burns, aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, where we left off on Tuesday, I think, well, the discussion is going to be about the size of the building. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
So, who wants to speak to that?
Mr. Chair, I got some questions about it. Did anybody, I, I still did not get the information I asked for, I guess, two days ago, about the numbers. The number, the number now we're speaking today about this, and I'm not sure if the number, or the number, the number is, as far as what they look like for population.
All right, Mr. Taylor's coming up.
Yes, sir. The items requested were shared shortly after we adjourned on Tuesday. There was a site feasibility letter, as well as the evaluation of the school capacity at twenty-five-hundred and three-thousand, I think, if, if I'm not mistaken, sir. Those, those documents were sent out about the time you were texting me the pictures from Heidi Trask High School. If I need to resend those, I'll be glad to do that now.
Thank you, Mike, or Mr. Taylor. So, one, I guess what I'm referring to, maybe I should put more specific, that's February on my end, but I'm talking about when Blair Bordeaux was to investigate how much it was going to cost to do this. Where, where are we at number by as far as expand it to three-thousand, thirty-five-hundred, whatever the case was?
I don't think there was analysis for the budget, sir. The analysis was the feasibility of the site and the capacity of the facility. There were no budgetary numbers tied to that that I can remember, but Mr. Blair Bordeaux is here, who may be able to answer additional questions related to that, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Good afternoon, Blair Bordeaux. So, we presented the summary for when we were asked to assess the ability to expand the school size. So, the, the two kind of things that we are dealing with, with the school size, one is the limitation on, on what the site can support, traffic incoming to the site, wetlands, and redesigning the school layout as far as queuing for the additional school, additional parking and infrastructure, not to mention the core size of the building. So, that would be your kitchen, your administration library, is what's kind of considered the core. So, that's where we settled on the, the ability to add two-hundred-and-fifty students of capacity to the school without having to effectively start over on the full civil design and architectural design. Does that, does that answer the question?
Mr. Bordeaux, it does answer some of the questions, but do you have any documentation from DOT to verify what, what you're referred to as far as the traffic goes?
So, what has been presented to the DOT is the full build-out capacity. That was the twenty-two-fifty, has been submitted to the DOT with the TIA.
So, expansion of the school, what you're telling me is, the expansion of the school hasn't been presented to go to three-thousand?
Uh, to the DOT, that question asked to the DOT specifically, no, it has not.
Okay. And I think, I may be wrong, if I am, just make correct me, but I think that's where, I think that's where we're at, and it's got to get confused, Mr. Bordeaux, because twenty-five-hundred or twenty-three, you said a minute ago, that according to the study of the population, open the doors of big capacity, that's just not, that's just not what right looks like, in my opinion.
So, the purpose today is to, we're going to need to go ahead and come up with what size do we want? Is that, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'm going to make this simple, then. Does anyone have any more questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what does the, what does the number look like, seven-year? Does the population count go to seven years in the state, please? Or is that only a five-year plan?
Sir, are you referencing the comprehensive land use study that was recently conducted by Numerics?
Yes, sir, I am.
That was a ten, that was a ten-year study. So, we have projected numbers out to twenty-thirty-three, twenty-thirty-four.
Okay, so, if, if somebody could figure it out real quick, what, what is the average number for the twenty-thirty-three number?
Are you looking it up? We will have to look that up, sir. Those documents have been archived, and, and we'll be glad to look those up now.
Okay, thank you. I think it's, I think it would be safe to go off those numbers if it was only three percent off, according to what he said, before we come to a definitive amount for this report.
Okay, well, I'm, this is Beth Burns. I'm just going to keep this real simple. I was a little, I really anticipated that the expandable size of the school was going to be twenty-five-hundred. It was a little bit of a surprise to me to hear the other day that it was twenty-two-fifty, because we have an ever-increasing population over on that east side. And I, when we were in the design charrette, I, I said several times, but I never did mention a number, and that was, that was on me. But I just assumed that if we were going to bother to expand it, it would be greater than by, you know, just two-hundred-and-fifty students. But if that is where we're at, that's where we're at. We need a school desperately. We need another school on that side desperately. And I want to do it as well as we can, and I want it planned out as well as we can. However, we're also talking about a finite amount of money for this. So, does anyone else have any other comments?
Ms. Burns, just to, just to get a tail off what you're saying, I agree, we need a new school, but it is, it is a large amount of money. But I think if we're, if we're strategic about it and build now versus as Mr. Bordeaux's and the Mosley team came in there and stated, two years from now, it's going to be an elevated cost as, as to, you know, phasing it in, if you will. Foundations, once they're in, they're in, then you're, you're not going back underneath and straightening them out or correcting them. Whereas, if we, if we get a foundation big enough for a school, it's, it's a lot better. And cheaper, what I would add.
I concur. And I would love to say that we have enough money in the coffers to be able to go in and build a school that large. I'm not even a hundred percent sure that we do, because I don't know how much money that would be, or if we even have enough bond money for that. So, I'm, I'm trying to be as realistic about this as we can. But yet, I want to give, I want to give our stakeholders the best school that we can.
Don't, now, if we move people from the current Topsail Middle School, that has, what, about a thousand?
The current Topsail Middle School?
Yeah.
Has eight-hundred-and-forty-five students, sir.
So, you can subtract that from the...
Which includes fifth grade.
Yeah, I mean, you could say, that means you can subtract that from the capacity to start with, when you're talking about a net gain.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Minus in the fifth grade, and then the net gain. So, the fifth grade's a hundred-and-sixty, so they have...
So, six, seven hundred.
Six-eighty right now? So, that would give us five-hundred-and-twenty increase in student capacity.
But the growth's probably six-hundred, then.
And of course, you know, we all should realize that the DPI standard calculation for classroom capacity is well below what we currently ask our middle schools and high schools to accommodate, because there are no more stop enrollments on class sizes after fourth grade. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Breedlove, but some of our classrooms at Topsail Middle School already have thirty-two to thirty-four students in them, and the calculation is much lower than that. But if you utilize the concept of just subtracting current fifth grade, we would still have the hundred-and-sixty, if you subtract a hundred-and-sixty students, period, in twenty-thirty-one, twenty-thirty-two is when we would reach capacity of basically twelve-hundred-and-fifty students. But you have to take into account that the comprehensive land use study did have the fifth grade built into it. They will no longer have the fifth grade built into it. So, that number currently today is one-sixty, actually, one-fifty-nine, I pulled the number a little while ago, but there'll be more fifth graders, which won't be in that mix, right?
Right.
So, this school currently, if built with a twelve-hundred middle school capacity, would be able to accommodate our needs until at least twenty-thirty-one, thirty-two at capacity. But we know that we're going to increase those class sizes. And additionally, the concern I have regarding... The other concern I have regarding increasing it beyond the twenty-two-fifty is, we are seventy percent through the DD stage. There would be a significant amount of work lost, as well as time lost. And even though it may be cheaper to build something, you're, the lost, the, the cost-benefit analysis on the front end, I think would be much more concerning if we were to do that.
The redesign would probably be fairly substantial, I would think.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Burns. That ultimately was the decision that was made in this November twenty-eighth memo that when we studied, we studied a twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand, and thirty-five-hundred student capacity. We settled on the twenty-two-fifty because we could do that without going to a full redesign on SD. So, one, the cost of that, but more importantly, the time of that. So, we could keep the core size and continue moving forward with the twenty-two-fifty. We could add two-hundred-and-fifty students without changing core size and starting over design.
And the site prep is also for the additional, is already built in for the additional classrooms for the two-hundred-and-fifty?
Yes, ma'am. The site prep, which includes the surcharge that we discussed on Tuesday, incorporates those additional future expansions. One thing that I gave to Mike following that meeting as well was kind of a rough order of magnitude, should the board want to explore forward, to expand, would be about twenty-thousand square foot to accommodate the additional two-hundred-and-fifty students. A good rough order of magnitude budget for that would be in the twelve to thirteen million range. We'd be happy to work up some formal proposals to add that scope of what it would look like if the board chose to explore that option.
Okay. Well, and I know that we're also looking at, on this particular site, we, we are not looking at a very large site due to a lot of wetlands constraints, so... Okay, thank you.
So, let me make sure I understand this right. So, the plans have already been started, but we didn't have a solid number.
The, which plans are you referring to?
So, why would it cost money to go back and change the design? So, they've already been drawn.
Okay, so, the original contract was built around a two-thousand-student program, which is what we went through SD, went through the design charrettes around that time, and we presented a memo November twenty-eighth where we studied the additional options to expand capacity to twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand, thirty-five-hundred. That design had already passed beyond the point where it would have incurred additional costs.
But so, but so, the only, the only concrete number that was ever given was the two-thousand that was sold to the voters in the bond, correct? Can somebody answer that?
That is what is currently in our contract, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm going to go down the list. Everybody give me your opinion. My opinion is that we do twenty-eight-hundred. Ms. Burns, what is yours?
Um, as much as it pays me, twenty-two-fifty.
Okay. Mr. Smith? All right. And Mr. Springer?
Three-thousand.
All right, would someone like to make a motion for twenty-two-fifty?
Make a motion to expand the capacity of the proposed K-eight to two-hundred, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty students.
All right.
As currently designed.
All right, would anyone like to second? All right, motion dies. Would anyone like to make a motion for three-thousand?
I'll make a motion to expand the school to compensate for the growth at three-thousand. And, yeah, that's it.
All right, do we have a second? All right, motion dies. Would anyone like to have any other suggestions?
The re, the only reason I'm saying let's keep this at two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty is because we are going to look at a total redesign if we go back and add any more. That is from site work, stormwater design, I mean, everything, everything from there on up. It is going to be a significant charge. While I agree with my fellow, with my fellow board members that we need a larger school, I also have to look at this right now and say, if we do it as designed, maybe we can come back and add something later, whenever we've got, we'll see if there's any more bond money left, and come back and possibly do something else. But this is a significantly smaller plot of land than what we had originally wanted, and we are constrained by, we have a, we are constrained by a lot of wetlands all around it. And I just need the board to remember that.
Ms. Burns, if I may as well, one of our initial charges when we were brought on to the project was to study the site analysis, and that was what we presented on the August second, twenty-twenty-three memo, which we studied the feasibility of the site to support a two-thousand-student school. So, that was what initially, what our, what we were charged with was studying the site to present that analysis when the site was acquired. But yes, you're correct, it would significantly punt back the design. More importantly, we would really need to reevaluate the feasibility of whether or not we could fit a three-thousand-student school on that site, which is not something that we have fully explored at this state.
Okay. How long would it take to do that, to study that?
Probably six weeks.
All right, does anyone have any other suggestions?
I would just say that we also do not have local governmental commission approval for this fund amount based on the negotiations with county government and the LGC. So, that process would have to be re-initiated as well because of the significant increase in funding, and whether or not the county is capable of actually affording that much bond money upfront being utilized.
Yeah, but the voters have passed the amount, so...
That's correct, sir.
I don't, how do they have a choice?
The LGC governs how those bonds can be sold over the next several years.
The LGC governs how those bonds can be sold over the next several years, and utilization of those funds for building schools.
All right.
Yes, that, so, Mr. Taylor, let, let's go ahead and get something, uh, since we're discussing bonds. The LGC wrote a bond in a, in a general, uh, to include building a new school. It doesn't, it didn't have anything in that bond about the capacity of the school. My question is, Mr. Bordeaux, who instructed you to only build, or only investigate, uh, only a 2,000-person school when numbers have been populated now, and now we're again behind the eight ball?
Uh, Mr. Springer, the, uh, RFQ that we initially responded to and interviewed for the program was stated in that RFQ of 2,000 students.
So the RFQ was put out by who?
By us.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
And 2,000 is what was voted on?
Okay.
2,000 is what was voted on and decided upon by the previous board, when the bond was proposed to the voters of this county.
We are, we are, we are in a position now, we're chasing our tails, right? I mean, the, the idea, the idea of what the voters on, uh, voted on, in my opinion, is a moot, is a moot point, because things change over time, i.e. air conditioner breaking down at Pender High School, thinking we could go ahead and get by till summertime, and here we are approving $53,000 worth of HVAC work. Population has expanded, we have to go bigger. I understand what the voters voted on, but they, I, I would be willing to challenge any voter to say, would you approve another bond in two years to make your taxes increase again? Their answer probably is gonna be no, and understandably so.
All right, does anyone have any suggestions for an amount to, uh, direct them to make for the size of the school today?
Mr. Ross, this is, uh, Ken Smith. I, I'm kinda confused to the, even the point of us even making a vote then, if what we're being told is that we're being constrained to, one, the amount, uh, that they're willing to, um, to do. So, I mean, is this just a formality that we're just putting a ribbon on a package that's already been made?
Yeah, that's new to me, too. I agree.
I mean, that, that's my thing, is so, that we're just, are we just finalizing or just making, making a vote on something that really, regardless, I mean, if you put, uh, anyone's suggestion on there, if I were to say, okay, 2,500 or, or whatever the amount might be, if legally we cannot do more than a certain amount, then what's the point of this vote, um, unless we're just evoting for what is already legally allowed?
Mr. Smith, this is Mr. person. I think, well, what would need to happen, if we, we'd have to go to the county, and then the county go into the LGC to discuss the scope for the expanded school. If I think what would happen next, as far as the board wanted to increase the size of the school, to that 3,000 number.
What it means is that other projects would be cut out. Because we have a set amount of bond money, period. So if you increase the size of the school, that means other projects would be cut out. That's the only way, I mean, it's the only way to do it. But I mean, but I, I admit that I don't understand how they can tell us, no, you can't do this, you can't do that, but it, I mean, the amount has been approved by the voters. The voters have told the county commissioners, you sell these bonds, period. So, I don't know what the LGC has to do with it, but, I mean, they've already been vetted that they can afford this bond before it was ever even placed on the ballot. So I'm way confused, but, I don't know, I just know that we need to get this project rolling, so we need to decide what numbers, you know, what size school do we want today?
Well, and it would also be nice to have-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smith, again, is that, we're already been told that in our last meeting, is that we're gonna be, we're already one year now, that we're one year behind than what we had anticipated. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if that's correct, then we're already one year behind, and we're having this special call recess meeting, coming back here to make this quick decision. Um, I guess the question is, is it worth doing the due diligence to make this school large enough to meet the ever-growing needs of the Hampstead, uh, community, and that community over there in the Topsail? Because we're just gonna pass a problem down to the next board if we don't do this, do this correctly.
Yeah.
I agree, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I think everyone would like to make it larger. I think the biggest issue is just, is it gonna hold it up? But of course, then if you got to build a new school later, that's another issue. Um, I just hate to wait six weeks, but I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Well, and if you increase the size of this school up to 3,000 students, this is Beth Burns, um, I can tell you that you're also looking at a redesign, which basically means starting out from scratch. We go back to the baseline. Is this really what we wanna do?
I agree with you, Ms. Burns, but this is Ken Smith. Right now, I'm willing to do whatever it takes so that we don't look back at this and realize that we've made a, a terrible mistake, an injustice for everyone living on the east side of our county, that we built this school and then look back and say, why didn't we build it larger? I'm willing to wait. Um, I mean, we're already told if, if we're, if we're the cause for this to be the delay, then that'd be one thing, but we're being told that there's gonna be a delay for one year regardless of what we do today. And I guess, what is the price difference? I mean, I, we're not, if we don't know for how long will we be able to tell what the price difference is gonna be. I mean, or we're gonna have, is that number can be given to us in six weeks? Um, I, I just don't see any slowdown of growth happening there at Hampstead.
No, sir, and it is also heading to the west side of the county as I've, um, anytime you get on Facebook over, uh, they're talking about all the new subdivisions that are being put over on the west side. So we, in time, we are also gonna have to be addressing yet another bond. And quite honestly, I heard that when, after the Surf City bond, uh, Surf City and Pender Lee bond, I also heard the same discussion that there would never be another bond passed, but here we are again. And I think the voters realize the need that we have. Certainly, everyone on the east side has seen the tremendous growth that has happened over there. And if they have a student within our schools, they know how, they know the, the struggle that we're under right now.
I got a, I got a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bordeaux, is there, is there no, uh, no way they can amend the, uh, amend? Is there any way they can amend the drawings instead of going back to the drawing board with the drawings you currently have, 60%?
Uh, so what we have studied is what we feel we can accommodate without going back to the, uh, beginning, uh, of the site design, which is the additional 250 students. Um, I have some, uh, strong concerns about the feasibility of the site to be able to accept a 3,000-student school, uh, potentially even endangering the 2027 open date, uh, on that site if it, because one of the, the things that we, uh, avoided in the way that we, uh, placed the school on that site specifically with the, uh, jurisdictional stream that effectively splits the site in two was only crossing it twice. And we avoided a special use permit with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which would have been over a year process. So that was part of the initial feasibility study when we cited that school, and I would have some concerns about a 2027 open date much beyond the 2,250, regardless of the redesign. The redesign cost, just for rough order numbers incurred to date, is about $3 million. Just the design cost.
Uh, Beth Burns, and not only that, weren't we not told by the DOT, were we not told by the DOT that, uh, that they also have a, um, a say in limiting the capacity of the school? I think that was the last meeting, that DOT has also said, well, you can only have so much traffic coming in because there's only two, there's only two ways in and out?
That's an, that, that's an interesting, uh, that question is, is more of a legal question that has not specifically been asked of whether or not the DOT has the ability to say that or not.
Yeah, let me stop, Brandon. Brandon.
Yes, sir.
So-
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yeah, DOT can't really dictate what we do, can they, legally? They can ask, but I mean, nobody asked them for permission to drive down the road today to get here. They're like us, they have to take what's thrown at them. Am I correct in, in a legal sense with that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, screw the DOT then. Their, their opinion is irrelevant.
Um, Beth.
The consideration you have to give to the DOT is the capacity on a state-maintained road, and what they require you to do as far as getting cars off of a state-maintained road for, uh, queuing for school pickup, and whether or not you have to have two or three lanes.
Okay.
They have, they have the ability to require that, um, which, which impacts, you know, the number of lanes of traffic you have to have coming into your school. Now, they don't control your capacity, but they control how you design your site. Mr. Bordeaux, you correct me where I'm wrong at that point, but they do tell you, like, how many lanes of traffic you have to have queuing off of a state-maintained road.
Well, my point is, no, I don't think anybody here cares what DOT's opinion is about some traffic back up on their road. I know I don't. It's our job to build a school and to operate a school, and I don't think anybody here gives a damn what DOT thinks about some stupid turning lane, or, I mean, frankly, that's their problem. So-
Okay, this is Beth Burns. Um, Mr. McPherson, uh, one question for you. Um, another thing, if we're talking about long delays on this, how long do we have to spend, um, bond funds after a vote, after they are voted on?
How long do you have to spend the bond money?
How, how long do we have, um, to spend? Is there a cutoff date to spend bond funds?
I, I am, I am not the bond council for the county, but I will tell you, I, I'm not aware of any deadline, um, on, on spending it once it's approved by the voters. Now, that's getting into the county's business, and that's not necessarily what I do. But I'm not aware of any timeline that you have to spend the money. Now, um, the, the point to be made is that, you know, things don't get cheaper over time, they always get more expensive. Um, but, you know, it all, it's all based on the sale of those bonds, um, and when the county wishes to do that and, and could access those bonds, if that makes sense.
Yes.
To everyone.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Bree Love, is there any way that you could get up with our bond attorney to ask that question, get us an answer for that?
Yes, ma'am. Will, will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Springer, I think you had some, another question.
Uh, yeah, I got a couple things. Mr. Bordeaux, I'm willing to listen to your concerns if you'd like to advise the board what they are.
Uh, of concerns about the ability to expand 3,000 students?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Excluding, excluding the deep foundations.
Correct. So the discussion is of whether or not the additional queuing, which the DOT can require us to do, uh, on-site.
Let me stop you again. If we were to go against them on the queuing and build what we want to, what can they do to us? That's what I would say.
To my understanding, we would not be able to get a building permit and build the building.
Really? Well, I would like to see the county try that, when we've got voters that have demanded that we build a school. So, sounds like we better sit down with the DOT instead of just opinions, but...
I can go.
So can somebody get the DOT to come see us at some point? Maybe we should even have a joint meeting with them and the county commissioners. Because if they won't hold up a building permit over this, we will make a laughing stock out of this place. All right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Mr. Bordeaux. Um, what is the legal amount right now that you can build on that piece of property?
Uh, the legal amount is not really something in, in my purview. I mean, we're, ultimately, you're-
No, what I'm saying to you is legally, how, how many people can you be able to put on that piece of property? Because I'm hearing several different numbers being tossed around, and just what exactly is the number that you can be able to put on there? Can you answer that?
Not without studying. What we would need to go back and, and really reassess the additional queuing that DOT would require, assuming that they can require that, which is our understanding they can, uh, and then evaluate how much additional, uh, queuing we can place on that site, uh, due to the wetland delineation, whether we go three-stack. Uh, one thing we discussed when we discussed the 3,000-student, uh, idea was potentially adding a parking deck, uh, and potentially going to three stories. Uh, the three-story consideration would effectively require deep foundations, which is ultimately why we did not, uh, recommend that route and where we set it on the 2,250.
Anyone else? All right, what y'all wanna do? All right, this meeting is recessed until Monday at 3:00 PM. Thank you.